Welcome, everyone, to the regular meeting of the Minneapolis Planning Commission for July 21st, 2025. I'm Chris Meyer and I'm Chair of the Commission. At this time, I'll ask the Clerk to take the role.
Commissioner Baxley is absent. Chavry is absent. Conley is absent. Gordon?
Present.
Jones is absent. Meyer?
Here.
Shepherd?
Present.
Shefty is absent. Thompson?
Here.
Wagner?
Here.
We have five members present.
We have a quorum. First, we'll take the minutes of July 7th, 2025. Is there a motion to adopt those minutes?
So moved.
Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Those minutes are adopted. Next, we will organize the agenda. We have two items. Staff is recommending that we discuss item five and have item four for consent. So number four is 3246 Nicollet Avenue in Ward Eight. Was anyone here to speak against the staff recommendation for item four? Anyone? All right, so we're going to have item four on our consent agenda, and then we'll be discussing item five. Is there a motion to adopt that agenda?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? That agenda is adopted. All right, so I will open the public hearing for item four, 3246 Nicollet Avenue. Would anyone like to speak on this item? All right. Not seeing any, so I will close the public hearing for item four. Commissioners, is there any discussion on item four? Not seeing any, so is there a motion to adopt staff recommendation for item four?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Item four is adopted. Good luck with your project. All right, now moving to our main item for the evening, number five, 3003 Hennepin Avenue, 1340 West 31st Street, et cetera, et cetera. Staff is Hillary DeVorec.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am Hillary DeVorec, a Principal City Planner in the Land Use Design Preservation Section of CPAD, here to present item number five tonight for you. This is the Seven Points Redevelopment Project located at 3003 Hennepin Avenue and several other addresses in the near vicinity. The applications before you today are a conditional use permit to amend a conditional use permit or an amendment to a conditional use permit for a planned unit development, excuse me, to allow the 228-unit residential building, and then site plan review. Staff inadvertently took in a conditional use permit for a shopping center that is not needed. So it's just the two applications. We are requesting that you return the other item tonight. So this is located at the southeast corner of Lake Street and Hennepin Avenue in the south uptown neighborhood. The site is Zone CM4 and in the Transit 10 built form overlay district. The Seven Points is an existing planned unit development located on the southeast corner of Lake Street and Hennepin Avenue. The planned unit development includes the shopping center, a sports and health facility, a parking ramp, and a vacant lot. The development site includes the entire block bounded by Lake and 31st, Hennepin, and Vacated Gerard, and then the entire west side of the block to the east, if you can follow all of that, and then the entire property that stretches on Hennepin Avenue, or excuse me, Lake Street. I apologize for that, at 1305 West Lake. So plan north is to your left. This is the 1305. This is the vacant site, existing shopping center, current shopping center space that will come down, existing parking ramp, and then this is for future redevelopment in the future. Excuse me. The applicant is proposing to demolish the southern portion of what is currently the existing mall. So CB2, kitchen window, famous daves, the new entrance that went in less than 15 years ago. All of that will be coming down, and they are proposing to construct a five-story, 228 residential building on the site. The proposed building is in the shape of a U. It's oriented north, creating an exterior courtyard between the proposed building and the Seven Point Shopping Center, which is located 22 feet north of where the building will sit. Outside amenities, there is paved surfaces and green space, also a dog run in that area. And those outdoor spaces are for the residents of the building and can be accessed from inside of the building, or there is a walkway that would connect Hennepin to Vacated Gerard through the site for residents that have key card access. Also located along Hennepin Avenue, there's a short-term bicycle parking area located between the proposed building and the southern wall, the new southern wall of the Seven Point Shopping Center. And then on this area between the two buildings, this is reserved for trash and recycling pickup on those days that it is being utilized. Other changes to the site currently, this is Vacated Gerard. For those of you that have been around for a long time, it was the Gerard Meander at one point in the Uptown Small Area Plan. I don't think people refer to it as the Meander anymore. It was this idea that connected 31st up to the Midtown Greenway through those two next blocks north of this site. Changes here, the entrances and exits to, for vehicles to the ramp will still be maintained on the northern end and then on the southern end. There will be transformers and mechanical equipment in this location. There will be a loading space in this location. There is no on-street loading zone near this site for this use. Hennepin Avenue can't have loading. 31st can't have loading. Lake Street can't have loading. So this is the best place for a loading zone. And because of geometry of roadway, coming in and out from 31st was also a no. So that is where they're proposing to put the loading space, is their, talked between the proposed building, excuse me, and the existing parking ramp. This is just a floor plan then of the site, or of the, of the, of the area, or of the new building, excuse me. They would, there would be a principal building. I'm just going to sit here because this is getting to be a lot of back and forth. The principal entrance into the building is located here at Hennepin and 31st. Yellow on your screen are building amenities for the residents. Blue are units. This is an interior bike storage area. So that is how the applicants are proposing to use the ground floor of their building. In the CM4, there is required commercial, but the development, the planned unit development that stretches this entire block, all of the required commercial for this site is already on the site. It's already in the mall and it exists. So there is no requirement that this housing project put retail in it. I want to be clear on that. They are not required to have any additional because all of the required is already on the site. There will be a new wall built on the southern end, obviously. Once they demolish the southern portion, there will be an opening. So they will be building a new southern wall to the shopping center. There will be modifications in what is currently the Jimmy John's site that will be opened up and allow that entrance connection or walk-through connection from Hennepin to Vacated Gerard, as one can do now. There is a 731 space parking ramp on the site. No changes are proposed. The applicant is looking to use up to 113 of those parking spaces. And then for the travel demand management plan, they did need to achieve four points. They are doing the limited vehicle parking. So again, they are allowed to up to 50%, so 114, they've set or negotiated with North Pond, 113 spaces. So they are providing that. And then they are unbundling, unbundling the price of parking. So you can rent the unit, but you don't have to rent a space. That would be a separate fee. So they do meet their points for the travel demand management plan with those two strategies. So the two applications in that are required is a conditional use permit to amend the planned unit development to allow the 228-unit residential development. We do not, we do believe that you should grant this conditional use permit. This would not be detrimental to the surrounding area or to the area residents, or disrupt the safety or comfort or general welfare. This is adding 228 units into an area that is heavily commercialized and has been. This mall was developed first in 1984, and to support that retail that is in the mall now, that will remain, we believe that this will be a good addition to the neighborhood. Excuse me. So we are recommending approval of the conditional use permit. The other application that's required is the site plan review application. The one area, the project meets all of the requirements of site plan review. Thank you to who pointed out, there was a typo in the staff report. It does meet all of the general landscaping and screening requirements. I apologize. There was a typo in the staff report. This project does meet those landscaping and screening. So the only item that needs alternative compliance is for building walls, and that's actually not for the new building itself. It's for the southern wall of the shopping center. That elevation or the proposed elevation and what that would look like is on the bottom of this. So when you're on Hennepin Avenue, Hennepin Avenue is the top image. This is the southern end. This is the Jimmy John's right now. This will become the new southern edge. And so when you wrap the corner, this is what you see when you go around the corner. So skip the middle elevation, please. This is what's there. And then it transitions to a different color scheme that then mimics or more closely matches the grays in this building. And so what the applicant has done is blending, taking the browns, the terracottas, the tans that are of the Seven Points Mall currently, revised over many decades, obviously. And then this would be the new wall that would match the, or complement the existing southern end of the mall that will remain, and then the new, the new building that would be on the corner. So they are altering those colors every 24 feet. While it's not a recess or a projection, we do believe that this meets the intent of the site plan review, and so we are recommending that you grant alternative compliance. So those are the two applications. No unusual, well, I should say, I should go through the conditions of approval for the conditional use permit. I apologize. I didn't do that in my presentation. I apologize. So there are three, four, five A. There are three. The second, third, and fourth conditions are not typical conditions. They're standard conditions. So the knockdown ballards at the north and south ends. So there are, there have been, there are supposed to be, there should be knockdown ballards at both ends. Life happens. I know they're not all right there right now, but they're supposed to be. And so to manage this access into the parking garage and to manage this and to, to direct people into the parking garage, not through the middle of Vacated Gerard, because this is meant for pedestrians. This will also be used, though, for loading. This is also used for loading here for the shopping center. It'll be used for loading for the residents. It's also used for trash and recycling pickup. But I shouldn't be driving there. You guys should not be driving there unless you work for them, but we should not be driving in there. And so the visual cues to keep you going into the parking garage are knockdown ballards and signs. So we are adding conditions that strengthen that. And so we just, the applicant needs to maintain the knockdown ballards for the life of the project. Signage should be added that helps direct traffic into the parking garage and not into the middle of the site, and that the owners, the applicant and the owners of the Seven Points, of North Pond, should explore the idea of the electronic gate controls that they have discussed in the narrative. They have not come to a resolution, so we are encouraging them to do that without requiring them to do that because of the other mechanism that they've had in place. And the other mechanisms have been in place since this was redone back in 2008, 2010, when the mall was revised. These changes to Gerard were done then. And so a continuation of them, ensuring that that pedestrian path comes through and that we do what we can to ensure, to try to manage traffic coming through the site. So I think with those added conditions, I think those are the things that are different on this conditional use permit. And so I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, Hillary.
Thank you.
Commissioner Conley.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had a quick question, a clarifying question on the parking situation. So it sounded like there were 700-plus actual spots, but that the developer wants to use just over 100 of those. Can you talk a little bit more about that? Because the follow-up question is incentivizing bus passes, considering that we just put the beeline right there. Thank you.
I guess, yes. So there are 731 parking spaces. The applicant is going to contract with North Pond for 113 of them. But I will let them speak to the bus pass question. They don't, I mean, it's, they don't need any more points or any more strategy points to, for us to administratively approve that application, but I think you could ask that question for them.
Other questions? Commissioner Wagner?
Thank you, Chair Meyer. I had a question about number four on the conditional use permit, about the, shall explore the idea of adding an electronic control gate. Is that something that staff can mandate that the applicant do, or is that not in the purview of staff?
I think we could add it as a condition of, a way of controlling traffic and access through, through there. It would be tied to the conditional use permit.
And as a follow-up question, how would you feel about that potential adjustment?
I don't have any feelings on that being as an added condition. I think it would be something to ask the applicant team.
Thanks. Other questions? I have several with the intent of kind of providing guidance for our public hearing. So we received a letter from the South Uptown Neighborhood Association, and I just wanted to ask some questions related to the things that they ask for. So they talk about how they support the project in general, the addition of 228 new apartments, including the affordable units and the appropriate scale and height en masseing. But this is a major pedestrian area, and they complain about this underwhelming dull features. So they make a few recommendations. They say, we suggest larger windows, Juliet balconies, or walk-up units to break up the facade and create some visual interest at ground level. So I was wondering if you can tell us, this is kind of a unique situation where it's a planned development with other sites as part of it, and we have previously approved a CUP a couple of years ago around this. So what is within the Planning Commission's authority to do right now in regard to conditions like those?
I'm not sure which windows would get larger. Like in this case, we have a required window requirement, and they are meeting that. I was just trying to find the page in the staff report. Like on Hennepin Avenue, the first floor is 20%. They have 40. Second floor and above facing Hennepin requirement is 10. They have more than 10%. First floor facing West 31st Street is 418 required. They have 735 or 20%, and they have 35%. So they are meeting their window requirements on the ground floor and every level above the ground floor. There is energy code requirements too, where you have to be mindful of your window to wall ratios. And so I don't know how much larger these could get before they actually have to start getting smaller. That's something that their architectural team would need to verify for you. In terms of Juliet balconies, Juliet balconies are not balconies that allow one to walk out. Just so for those of you in the commission who may not know what a Juliet balcony is, a Juliet balcony is a screened door with a bar in front of it, so you can lean out. Say hello to Romeo, maybe. But then you have, but you can't go out into it. You can only stick your head out of it. So we don't require balconies. We require, you know, what's in the building walls, the building entrances, and the building placement standards. We say that if you took this and made a Juliet balcony out of it, we'd bring you back here to have a conversation with you. But if you add them, we don't. But you can't, like, you can't subtract from this point. They could add without us having a major minor conversation about whether or not it comes back to the Planning Commission. So I'm not exactly sure. I did read all the neighborhood comments too. I don't know in what windows they would want those. But again, I think that's a question for them and maybe the applicant.
So they can add balconies but not subtract. Could the Planning Commission have a condition requiring a certain increased number of them?
Chair Meyer, I think I can say, you know, we would need to have some sort of direct nexus to something that the applicant is asking alternative compliance for from the site plan review chapter typically, when we start adding conditions of approval like that that are purely design-focused. You know, as you know, the site plan review chapter now does take a fairly light hand when it comes to exterior building materials. So if there is some sort of nexus to something they're asking alternative compliance for, then, you know, I think our city attorneys would be fine with a condition of approval that adds some sort of design element where it's needed for alternative compliance. But beyond that, again, this is site plan review, and the requirements are laid out in the code. So asking for them to go above and beyond that when they're not asking for alternative compliance would not be advisable from a staff perspective.
So that leads to my next question about the one alternative compliance that they're requesting in regard to the wall. So what would be the default if we were to just deny alternative compliance?
Yep. And I talked with the applicant about this. They could, I mean, work with building code, but you could put windows. You could move, you know, the light portions that you see back two inches. You could pull the dark portions out. But this is the grid line. This is the property line for the building, and so there are some building code implications that need to be discussed with the project team and their architects who have studied this more so than me. But that would be, that would be the alternative, is to push or pull it a little bit, add some windows every 25 feet. They change the color every 24 feet, so we thought that that meant the intent. This, yeah. So we felt that this meant the intent. We recommended alternative compliance, but you could recommend something else.
Okay. Yeah, so before I open the public hearing, just, we'll give that advice to the testifiers to, you know, you'll be most effective if you direct your comments toward things that the Planning Commission has control over. So we can deny alternative compliance. We can attach conditions if they have a nexus to alternative compliance. We don't have any ability to require a commercial, as Hillary said. So with that, I'll open the public hearing. I'll make one other PSA about it. We do have closed captioning for this, so when you speak, please speak clearly and slowly enough that they can correctly caption what you say. So do we have the applicant here with us today? Come on up, introduce yourself, and tell us about your project.
Hi, good evening. My name is Chakal Hyder. I'm with Doran Companies. I'm here tonight as the development lead on this project. I do have a quick kind of presentation I prepared just to address anything that Hillary brought up anyhow that maybe needed further vetting and analysis. So I will pull that up quickly for you. All right. I'm going to sit down if you don't mind, just so I can be closer. So again, I know Hillary already gave a good explanation of context of where the site is. Just bringing that back up in front of your attention for better visual. This was in our entitlement package from the architecture plan set. You can see the Vacated Lot where you're seeing the farmer's markets happen currently right now in Uptown, the parking ramp, the remaining retail, kind of that Seven Points Corners that you see at that prominent corner, and then where the future multifamily site will be located. To give you context, I know, again, Hillary spoke to what is existing today, but this gives you a better visual of what you see currently at 31st and Hennepin. Right now, there's a temporary tenant in that space, otherwise pretty quiet. This is an old, famous days. It's been vacanted for a number of years at this point. This is a view looking into that Gerard. And I think Hillary explained to you a little bit about, so this is right past the point when you drive into the parking ramp here on that top right image. As you think about what the future holds, when you're trying to limit that pedestrian-only feeling, again, we have recommended adding knockdown ballards on the south side that don't exist today. They exist on the north side, improving that kind of pedestrian experience, and then bringing that presence, which you can see, the Seven Points Mall has been there a while, but this part of the mall has been kind of that one, one and a half story, also a lot of parking lot that exists today. So it brings a lot of presence back into that streetscape. Again, Hillary touched on this, but just reiterating, that connectivity through the mall, as we are not responsible for the entire PUD site area, we're proposing just the multifamily. The property owner, North Pond, is in contact with us and has expressed the importance of getting tenants back into this space. Although we don't have control of that over today with the presentation at hand, I want to reiterate the importance of keeping that access through the mall that is existing today, and it's just shifting slightly on Hennepin to this location post-construction of our site. It gets, again, pedestrian access through this mall, encourages, once tenants do come back into this mall into a commercial setting, to visit those spaces, right? If they parked at that ramp to maybe otherwise go to another retail space, restaurant, service on Hennepin, they're naturally going to have that mid-block crossing point, take it out through there. Otherwise, there's another kind of access point through the mall. We've talked thoroughly with the property management representative, I believe she's in the audience tonight too, to answer questions, but she believes strongly in the presence of bringing in this multifamily use and keeping that access internal to the mall during business hours when it makes sense, because she needs to help get in more commercial spaces. So giving you kind of the full context and picture of how, again, outside of our control, what this means for the future of the commercial. In the comprehensive plan in the city of Minneapolis, we're meeting, again, the intent about bringing in residential into a setting of a highly commercialized area to help support the future of that retail. The other thing I want to note is that commercial component that Hillary addressed, we are meeting through the overall compliance of the whole area. The first four is amenity space, but we are designing that at a 12-foot ceiling height, meaning it has flexibility in the event it doesn't make sense, and it's not really following the zoning compliance right now to propose commercial. But if we had a change in prospective tenants that don't want to go in the minority or majority vacant mall, we could come back through with a conditional use permit revision to allow commercial net first. So there's that flexibility in the current building, call it architectural design. The other thing I really want to note that's very important to this project, and maybe what a previous planning commission saw when Doran Companies was here in 2023 with a fully entitled project, is this green courtyard space. Residents coming into this are valuing that community that, really, their only green space they have, right, for their, their unit. They'll have balconies, full-size balconies, as you can see in the plans. But that green space will have a dog run located here on Plan West, and then, you know, some community space, which I gave you some images later on to kind of visualize that. So a couple of things that just needed to be added for clarity, that wall that was addressed in terms of alternative compliance, that wall faces the interior of this building, right? So that color scheme, why it's matching this gray, call it gray-black, copper tones of the multifamily was intentful. The first 50 feet of that elevation to about approximately this point in your screen is that kind of terracotta tan colors that match the rest of the Seven is that kind of terracotta tan colors that match the rest of the Seven Points Mall, because that's truly what you will see as a non-resident walking past this site. Clarification, we cannot add windows in this elevation. It is a building code requirement. It is 22 feet from the residential use, so that commercial with a residential use adjacent limits us. I would also note, we have proposed within constructability limits. Those are precast kind of panel design that helps support this wall. There is undulation, call it by about an inch, and I have our architect here present that could come clarify in case I'm wrong, in the every other color. So the darker to light would have a different brick kind of stagger front and back. So it's not just a flat panel with two different colors. It actually does variate in depth a little bit. So we proposed what we could within a lot of the limitations we have when you mix now two separate buildings but close together in their separation. And then also color schemes that were respectful of what the public sees versus what interior tenants will see. Again, this image was in the presentation by staff, gives you an example. There's a bike storage facility in here and that kind of short-term bike parking that could be used for residents or anybody visiting the mall. Perspective of how this complements that previous image you saw, kind of the low-scale retail that was pretty underwhelming as it stands today versus what you'll see facing Hennepin with kind of that view shed that will encourage people to go back through the mall as tenants hopefully, you know, increase after our project is being proposed. That Hennepin and 31st Street image. And then I wanted to give you perspective. There's a lot of misconception, I think, about what does active amenity use look like? We are seeing as a developer, the experience of kind of live-work co-working spaces is a really prominent use in our first-floor typical spaces. This gives you an example of what that looks like to live in those spaces. So this is what you see at that street level, right? So it's showing is kind of a, hard to tell what's in those windows. So giving you more perspective of what you would see as an outsider. Same thing with that bike storage room. This is an example of a project in northeast Minneapolis we just did called The Laker. That is a bike storage facility, bike fix-it station, heavily used presence on this street and encourages the Minneapolis lifestyle, as you know, that people often seek with more than a one-to-one bike stall ratio. Wellness, fitness, again, spaces that are actually used and designed with intent that create that kind of livability. Reference to windows, again, I think Hillary noted some of the calculations with glass in terms of meeting code. We do exceed that significantly in the first floor. We have experience with doing walk-up units. I think that was what was addressed in the question there. One of the most important factors for us in developing in this location, in this market, as a developer, we know security and access to your units. We've done walk-up units in all sorts of markets and we've actually experienced most residents do utilize the internal building access, the corridor access, to get to that unit. So it becomes kind of this afterthought often when you have those as a predominant access point versus a real usability and value. And you also see some grade challenges as you go around the building from front to back. This is just, again, high-level rendering of what you see as a courtyard, but really what you're experiencing is those amenities that are, again, it's, it's a very sanctuary type of setting in a suburban or in an urban area that, you know, allows for, for change. Another item I kind of heard as a question was transportation. So in our work with the property owner, the 731 stall parking ramp is, as you know, stands today very underutilized. The idea of having less retail, there's already going to be less demand in that parking ramp. And so encouraging residents to park with obviously the limitations and the conditions of our approval proposed tonight encourages then, as retail comes back into this mall, that feeling of security, right? Because you have people now in that ramp. There is that safety, that flexibility, and it's a very underutilized parking ramp, even with the proposed commercial reduction of about 60,000 square feet. So we feel thoroughly supportive of sharing that use as an overall PUD. And our, again, I know the one item that was an alternative compliance, really, within our proposal, everything else meets code, is that building wall, again, which is internal facing to this. We're willing to listen to conditions within what we can do from a building code perspective and we could have our architecture team up here to help you understand what those limitations are. So excited to be here. We are seeing from the community, we started reaching out back in April with a neighborhood meeting. On April 30th, we, I know there was a letter included tonight. That Neighborhood Association was invited along with others. Pretty minimal comments, actually, until the last week that we heard from the community and have been welcoming opinions, especially if they're consensus. And I know folks are here to speak tonight to that. And so that was April 30th that we held a neighborhood meeting as a development team with, again, inviting the two wards, Ward 7 and 10, and then along with five neighborhood groups that serve this area. So tonight, I will help address questions as they come up. Feel free to invite me back if it's something Hillary can't answer as a staff spokesperson. Otherwise, we do have our architect and our civil engineer present with us tonight that can help answer more detailed questions about building code requirements, et cetera. So thank you for the time.
Thank you. Commissioners, we have questions for the applicant. Commissioner Conley.
Just wondered, thank you, Mr. Chair, about incentivizing transit use, given that the B-line was just put in right there. Some developers have chosen to incentivize using public transit. And so sometimes that means that they don't need as many parking spaces as they thought they would. And often, rapid transit does activate areas, just like housing does. So I wondered if you had thought of that, if there's ways that you plan to attract tenants using the rapid transit that is brand new to the area.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioner Conley. We do have a property management team that is in-house as part of Doran, and we've talked to the Whitecap management team about transit solutions and how we plan a marketing that. The long and short to your answer is yes, absolutely, that's a value. As we've looked at other projects, what we don't have the full, call it, capacity to manage is we're, we're meeting people, right, when they want to come lease a unit. So we certainly can encourage people not to have a, a car if they have it. But we have a variety of tools. We're going to figure out as we finalize kind of our marketing plan about what is the most, call it, resourceful use of promoting the existing assets today. Absolutely open to conditions on that, if it's something that's important to the commission that we commit to today. Otherwise, those are typically items we look at as we get further along in understanding what we have to do as, again, a long-term owner and property management team to meet where the community's at and what they really value, if that makes sense.
Other questions? Commissioner Wagner.
Thank you, Chair Meyer. I have the same question as I had for staff about the gate, an electronic gate along the pedestrian-oriented street. Could you speak to whether that's feasible, whether you consider it that?
Yeah. Good evening, Commissioner Wagner. That is feasible. It's something we, you know, as we talked through this early on with staff, just didn't get the time and attention yet. That's why it's proposed as considering it tonight. We would be open as that being a condition. There's a fire lane access easement through here that exists today. That's not part of our project, but that exists. So that was the one item that actually kept us from committing to it today because I'd like the fire department to ensure there's, there's ways to do that, right? There's electronic card readers, there's codes that they could have, so they always have access to that. Obviously, with limited service through there, which is just for move-ins or trash pickup, you could provide a limited code for that. So it's just making sure that if that was a condition tonight, we're absolutely open to that. We could just have that as a condition with, call it, final consideration and approval by Public Safety and Public Works. But it is another resource besides the knockdown ballards that could be managed.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gordon.
Thank you. This is a question regarding the, the wall and, you know, is, would be good or helpful to hear from the architectural team regarding the availability of porosity. I understand it is a zero lot line issue, but my understanding is there are options also out there regarding fire-rated glass, meeting a 2-hour required rating for such a situation. I feel like that could add some character along there, so it'd be good to get some more context there. Thank you.
I'll invite Peter up here with Cas Wilson to answer the question.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Peter Crisanzo with Cas Wilson Architects, also a Minneapolis resident at 4226 29th Avenue South. So regarding the, the southern wall of the Seven Points building that we're going to be building, so we've chosen that location because it's right on the property line. It's basically a zero lot line and it's aligning with the existing structural grid of the Seven Points Mall. So my understanding, Table 705.8 in the Minnesota State Building Code, if you're within zero to three feet of a property line, there's 0% openings allowed. Doesn't matter if you're sprinkled, doesn't matter if it's a protected opening. So that's my interpretation and understanding is if you're within three feet of that lot line, that you have 0% opening. I believe once you're three to five feet, that's when those conditions of protected openings come into play, where you can then, I believe, then goes to 15% opening along that wall. But we're, you know, in this situation, we're, we're kind of stuck right at that property line. And that's where, you know, we're, we're trying to provide relief visually by changing the different materials and different colors. And again, I think, you know, in the elevation, when you see that image, I think it comes across as, as being kind of monolithic, but it's also kind of a distortion because you're really never going to see that perspective, you know, that's going to be obstructed by the new construction building. So I understand the desire for transparency and openings. We're just doing what the building code allows us.
Thank you. Other questions? Commissioner Shepherd.
I just had one clarification on that.
Sure.
You mentioned brick. Is it architectural precast with a brick veneer or is it just architectural precast? The wall we're discussing.
We were exploring different options right now. I think both of those are on the table. The final aesthetic will be a brick aesthetic. I think right now, as it's proposed, it would be a tilt-up precast panel. But, yeah, I think that's kind of where our elevations are right now.
You're working on it?
Yeah.
Good. Thank you. And I'm sorry, I have one follow-on question, if I, if I may. The unit mix, is this 100% market rate?
Commissioner Shepherd, I can speak to that. 80% market rate with 20% at 50% AMI. Again, AMI area median income, so households earning that set forth of the Hennepin County income requirements, those 20% of the units. And that's a mixture, right? So it's not all one. We have Studio Alco, which is a small one-bed, one-bed, one-plus den, two-bed and three. So we'd have a variety of those 20% affordable, which is 46 affordable units in those different unit types evenly spread out and evenly spread out throughout the building. That is an inclusionary zoning, exceeding that requirement of 8%.
Excellent. Thank you.
Other questions? So in regard to what was in the South Uptown Neighborhoods letter, so they asked for larger windows. You're saying you already exceed the requirement by a large amount. It sounds like you're reluctant to go even larger. Is that correct or, or would you be open to larger windows?
I think from a design aesthetic standpoint, going back to some of the elevations, I wouldn't be able to speak again to energy code modeling and where we're at in terms of glazing and allowed increase. I know we're meeting more than kind of the 20% requirement rule on that first floor. So open to conditions tonight. We are very much adamant about the momentum and not proceeding with delays on this due to kind of design tweaks, willing to consider conditions. But again, with further consideration, we are proposing something tonight that is meeting code and often exceeding it in many areas. And when we exceed it, it's for a reason, right? We see value in the amount of light, but also flexibility in the wall space that we do have to, again, allow for the most flexibility of some pretty large amenity space that could be later changed to commercial with, again, coming back through if that was the desire. So it gives us the most flexibility, what we see as the most, call it, window frontage right now without limiting, right, the future kind of use and final, final programming that we're not required, call it, to be at that stage during these entitlements.
And then you were concerned about walk-up units, but how about balconies? Would you be receptive to adding more balconies?
Yeah. To answer your question, Commissioner Meyer, we have balconies basically on every unit on this project proposed, except for a few of those ground floor units, which basically is limited to about 15 units on 31st and Gerard. Changing those to patio doors with Juliet balconies versus a window is something we could consider, could consider as a condition tonight for approval. I would say, I don't know how that would speak from a staff nexus standpoint about what you can do. I don't know the legalities of that. I would say it's not something we would see as a right decision as a developer from what a tenant would experience and value. They would not typically, we don't do Juliet balconies from our experience and understanding. People don't use them versus an operable window. They'd be more likely to use and open and create. I think the idea of Juliet balconies is probably to feel like there's more presence on that street level, but I think it might have the counterbalance to that by people, again, not wanting to open their patio door to just lean out versus operating a window to get in the airflow and hear what's going on, right? You might also, when there's a farmer's market happening in the neighborhood, you might want to feel that liveliness, but opening your patio door and having a Juliet would be limited to just these units. Every other unit you saw today presented has full walkout balconies that are usable.
It does seem to me plausible that there could be a nexus around visible interest with the alternative compliance that's being considered. Any other questions before we proceed with the rest of the public hearing? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we have people raise your hands if you're interested in speaking? So I have an idea of how many there are of you. So we got about 10? Okay. All right. Great. And if, if one of you is representing the South Uptown Neighborhood, I'd be interested when you speak to hear more specificity about what you're requesting. But we can go ahead. You can just come up, come right up, introduce yourself.
Yes, hello, commissioners. My name is Scott Engel. I'm the executive coordinator for the South Uptown Neighborhood Association. And as you mentioned, we submitted our letter. We support the general concept of the project with the 228 units of a housing and we're very excited about the idea of all those affordable units coming to our neighborhood. We like the massing, the size, the height seems to fit the area, so we're fine with that. I think our concerns are that this plan has changed since that meeting they were talking about on April 30th. We did not get to see this plan until June 30th is when we finally saw the revised plans. Previously, there were 7,000 square feet of retail along the Hennepin frontage, which is a commercial corridor. It's disappointing. I understand maybe you cannot require commercial, but it is a little disappointing that it's going to be a bike, bike storage room and mailroom and stuff. So it's not the worst thing, but it's not exactly active in a commercial corridor. Also, the windows we were referring to are on the ground floor. Previously, those residential amenities that are now on Hennepin were along 31st Street and Gerard, and now they've been moved to Hennepin. And so the, the ground-level units on Gerard and 31st, they look odd because the windows are so small. All the other units in the building on the upper floors have those, those decks with the large balconies. And so the, the windows look weird and the way they're, they're higher up. balconies. And so the windows look weird, and the way they're, they're higher up, they're offset from the street, and so that's our concern, is the public realm of this proposed building is really dull. So it's great that it's going to be a U shape, and it's going to front Hennepin, 31st and Gerard, unlike the current property, but the ground level units are not great with those small windows. Additionally, South Uptown does refer to Gerard as the Gerard Meander. We really liked that concept from all those years ago, and we're excited about making Gerard Avenue a pedestrian-oriented street. And to this day, it continues to sort of look like a glorified alley, and I'm afraid the, it's going to continue a lot in that way with that 20-foot fire lane, and there's not a lot of plantings, there's no artwork, there's no seating, the materials. It looks like there's going to be a requirement to have a colored concrete sidewalk, a six-foot sidewalk, but, I mean, it's not the most interesting concept. We were hoping for a public space, planned unit development, they used to require some public amenities through that, and that's just not happening in this. And then the last thing is the wall, the south wall for the future Seven Points. It's going to stretch from Hennepin to Gerard, and there's the courtyard there. There's, there's 20-some feet between the new apartment building and the future wall, and it's going to be very visible. And so what we asked for in our letter was, it looks like they did add some of these panels, but we talked about things like vertical plantings, murals, something creative to, that wall is going to be 200-some feet long. So I think that's what we're asking for. And then finally, it's sort of a minor point, but we asked for maybe an additional color in the palette of the apartment building, maybe a brighter color. But beyond that, I think that's, that's our concerns. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so I have been given by staff a sign-up sheet with 15 testifiers, I'm going to read from this now. Lauren McCarty is the next one we have, and then on deck will be Judy Longbottom. Lauren, welcome.
Hello, I, my name is Lauren McCarty. I'm a member of the South Uptown Neighborhood Association, and I'm a member of the Land Use and Transportation Committee for the Neighborhood Group. I echo everything that the letter said. I think the letter was, you know, originally asking for a one-month postponement to, you know, consider some of these things further. I understand, you know, depending on what the rules may be, you know, maybe the most we can ask for is at least to urge a recommendation for some of these items that are of great concern for what is pretty much a high-profile intersection. I mean, it's garnered a lot of conversation for a reason. And I think one of the biggest changes that we saw from the previous iteration of this design was the inclusion of the apartment amenities on the ground floor. Even in the renderings, you can see there's really not a lot of activation along that, and you think of major intersections, you want things where people are coming in and out, you want greensapes, you want, you want a streetscape. And, you know, the type of people that get a ground floor unit with a patio are the type of people that want to sit outside, and they help kind of increase that activation. So we would still like, you know, for a recommendation for some of these things to still be considered. We agree, you know, there should be maybe a little bit more color variation, something that's kind of reflective of the kind of iconic and unique position of this building in the space that it's going to be relative to Uptown. It's a pretty big spot it's taking up, and really, that street activation is our biggest concern. And with so much space taken up along it, that's not really activating the public. We also did have kind of ideas about how to proceed, things that may not even hinder the schedule, that would allow us to, you know, focus on that stretch between Hennepin and Gerard, and figure out a way to almost widen it and make it a little bit more of a public space and activate it more, and kind of incorporate the private courtyard with a public space, and make it somewhere that's really an extension of the public space. Yeah, so that's most of what I had to say. And, and a lot of that is kind of personal stuff, but I do echo the sentiments of the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, next we have Judy Longbottom, and on deck will be Harvey Zuckman.
I have been the owner of the UPS Store in Uptown for over 20 years, and have been actively involved in the Uptown Business Association for many years. The urgency for the Doran-North Pond Partnership Project is critical to the greater Uptown community. We have been negatively impacted for far too long in the Uptown area with the lack of development, and have continued to watch businesses exit the area in record numbers. North Pond's Doran deserved the entire community's support to get this project off the ground and finally completed. North Pond has been a true partner in our community by hosting multiple events at no charge for the last several years, and now supplying significant space, staff, resources to support the Uptown Farmer's Market. North Pond is a business that believes in this community, and they have been actively involved, both with their time, resources, and money. They are asking for our help to bring a much-needed project to the area that they have been working on for many years, a project that will have a significant positive impact on Uptown's future. They have actively pursued input from all the neighborhood groups, and have shown their willingness to listen and support a well-thought-out plan for this wonderful change to a huge underutilized spot in Uptown. The completion of this project will be another huge positive milestone of the many we are beginning to see happening in the greater Uptown area. But we still have a long ways to go, and many spaces that need to be reactivated. Please let this project proceed and help move any other proposed projects in the future forward as quickly as possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Judy. Next we have Harvey Zuckman, and on deck will be Michael Landy.
Thank you, my name is Harvey Zuckman. I live in the East Bidam-Okoska neighborhood. The northeast corner of our neighborhood is directly across from the Seven Points Center, so we have vested interest in this. And I serve on the Liveability Committee, which is actually meeting tonight, and this is the item on our agenda tonight. We really didn't know that this was being discussed today, and we really want to have an opportunity to actually to discuss it and give some feedback. We found out, I found out earlier day that the meeting that was held on April 30th, our leadership did not receive notice of that. We did find that notice was sent, a letter was sent on the 23rd, email was sent on the 28th, which is only two days before the meeting. I don't know why that didn't get to our leadership, but we didn't know about it, we didn't attend that, we haven't had the opportunity to really weigh in on it. So my purpose in being here tonight is really to say, can we, you know, urgency is one thing, but doing it right is another thing. Can we really give our neighborhood some time to really look at this and give some feedback? I, you know, we also are very concerned about the activity. I owned a business on 26th and Hennepin for over 40 years. I traveled that stretch every day of my life, and I still do as a resident of the neighborhood. I'm very intimately aware of Hennepin Avenue and its needs, and the need to do things right. And I've been very involved in the business community, the neighborhood community. I am, I'm very concerned about the activation. I, as I look at it, and I'm talking personally now, to call this a planned unit development is, it seems to me to be a way of getting around the commercial space. When I saw the new plan, I assumed it still had that commercial space in it. I thought that was a vital part of it. When we look at back at the south, about the Uptown Small Business Plan that was developed some 20 years ago, it was never codified, I know, but it did call for commercial on the first floor, residential above that. I think we should still honor that plan, the desire of the community to actually have that kind of activation, that street-level activation that exists across the street, across Hennepin from this site. I just think we need to take a slight step back and say, you know, let's make sure that all the voices have been heard, because they clearly have not been heard from our neighborhood yet, and that's why I'm here tonight to say, please, can we wait a little bit longer while we're meeting tonight to talk about it, see what the feedback is and what, how our board will reflect on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Landy, and then on deck will be Sam Rockwell.
Good afternoon, my name is Michael Lander. I'm an urban infill developer. I live in Minneapolis at 3348 Hennepin. Our first project in 1991 was the Station 23 Lofts at 3524 Hennepin. Our most recent 2008 project is at 3153 Hennepin, one block from this site, and it's also our office. I care deeply about this neighborhood. I attended the June 25th stakeholder meeting, and I got inspired. A lot of people truly care about Uptown. I'd like to thank Doran Companies for coming into this challenging environment with a major investment and a vote of confidence in Uptown. New housing is a critical component of Uptown Forward, but this important location, the current conditions demand more. Delays are expensive, but the wrong project has many more costs involved for all involved. To limit my testimony, I'm not going to present the work we've done, I'm going to submit for the record a copy of the work that Build Public has done on the project since June 25th. We want you to know how much work has actually been done already to address these questions, engage the stakeholders, and create a project that better reflects both market conditions and the community goals. Build Public is the Lander Group, my company's pro bono initiative. It was formed in 2014 to provide professional expertise to engaged public stakeholders that often don't have these valuable resources. Our mostly disciplinary teams have worked on many of the major projects in Minneapolis, St. Paul, and beyond. We have produced a public realm-centered plan and an alternative site plan for the Doran Project we call Uptown Forward. It includes Doran's housing plus a central plaza, human-scale pedestrian connections each direction, a public safety strategy based on connection and activation. That's probably one of the most important things about this project. We create small retail space and a retail strategy that works with North Pond to restore the market, and green, beautiful streetscapes on Hennepin, 31st, and Gerard, and well-detailed residential stoops at grade. Those are critical. We have shown the Uptown Forward Plan to Doran, and both neighborhood groups, and many other stakeholders. We made immediate adjustments after initial feedback from Doran, and shared it with them July 16th. Build Public has offered to assist Doran and the stakeholders on a pro bono basis for the next 30 days to help create the best possible project. This neighborhood needs all the experience and resources it can muster to move forward. Doran can be a great anchor and produces good buildings. Others stand by to be the supporting cast. We all need a transformative project, and we can get it done fast. We are ready to go to work with Doran and the stakeholders tomorrow and every day. Please continue this application for 30 days and give us that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Rockwell, and then Aaron Robertson.
Thank you very much. And is the, is the overhead projector working? Is it possible to put things on the projector? Yes, I can. Okay. Thank you, my name's Sam Rockwell. Thank you for all the transit comments, Commissioner Conley. My name's Sam Rockwell, I live at 41st and Colfax, about a half-hour walk south of the project site. I am a regular user of Uptown, and my children are as well, and actually, my son's 11th birthday was at the roller rink in this site. So I've got, I've got some skin in the game here. You know, this proposal to me says that Uptown is dead, which is something we all hear, right? I mean, that there's not, activation and commercial here is a real vote of no confidence for Uptown. And it is true that the commission cannot require commercial under the zoning code. But within the commission's findings, you also must find consistency with the comprehensive plan. That is separate from consistency with the zoning code. There are zoning codes where there are conditional use permits that do not require conformance of the comprehensive plan. Ours does. And so you've got to also look at the comprehensive plan, it's not a rubber stamp to look at the zoning code and say, well, the comprehensive plan must be met. You've got to also look at the comprehensive plan. So, what does the comprehensive plan say here? Well, the comprehensive plan here is destination mixed-use, right? Destination mixed-use says, "Commercial retail uses are required at the street level of all development in this category." We heard the applicant earlier today say, quote, I wrote it down because it's helpful, "I'm not responsible, we are not responsible for the full PUD site. This is the development site. The south part of Seven Points is the development site." If we look at that site, it is up there. I can't actually see it.
It's upside down.
It's upside down. All right, okay. If you look at the site, which is here, it has multiple parcels. And the part that we're talking about down here is, is the parcel we're talking about, the southern portion of the site. In the 2040 plan, the entire site is destination mixed-use, right here. Okay? Now, you might say, well, yes, but it all operates as one building, and so we should consider the commercial on that one building. Well, this right here, this is the IDS Center block, right here. That also has multiple parcels. And when we look at what the 2040 plan did for that, it actually gave two different uses. And those multiple parcels, I'm using the IDS Center as an example here, because Crystal Court is like Seven Points. It is an indoor, two-story mall in an urban context. And, for example, Noah, the restaurant in Crystal Court, that's actually in this parcel here, the rest of the court is here. It all operates as one unit, but it has different comprehensive plan designations. And so you've got to look at the comprehensive plan designation for this site. And it's not just residual from the 2030 plan. This is the 2030 plan next to the 2040 plan. This is what we used to call Activity Centers. And you can see, the Activity Center moved to destination mixed-use, but there were adjustments, right? This part's gone, this part's gone. But this part, Seven Points, it did not change. The intent of the 2040 plan is to have commercial, require commercial, quoting the plan, in all development. Require commercial on all development. And they could have even split this, these parcels up, knowing that they're one building. Actually, in the 2030 plan, this is one building, it's split right in half. Part of it's in the Activity Center, part of it is not. The same kind of analysis flow is when we think about the Goods and Services Corridor, right, which is another designation within the comprehensive plan. Quote, "Increase access to commercial goods and services by requiring commercial activity in with the greatest density pedestrian traffic and transit service." That corridor goes right through here. This area, as we heard several times from Commissioner Conley, is one of the highest transit areas in the city. There is the B-line, there is the E-line opening shortly, there's the Uptown Transit Center. There is pedestrian activity because of the lakes, there's pedestrian activity because of all the commercial in the area. Even if we didn't require that commercial be there in the comprehensive plan, the conditional use permit also asks for, says that the conditional use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the vicinity. Other property in this vicinity is commercial property. And we know, and we have these districts, like in the 2040 plan, these districts of destination mixed-use, because we know that when commercial is near other commercial, we create a district and that district thrives. And if we start to undermine the district, that does, of course, impact and injure other properties in the district. Now, I am not asking that the commission deny this application, because I think that there are a lot of good things about it. I think that it's really, really important for development to move forward here, and I think it's possible for this commission to see a significantly better development, at least explored, over the next 30 days with a continuance. This is what the South Uptown Neighborhood Association asked for. I think there is justification to take a continuance, to ask that conformance with the 2040 plan be taken seriously by the applicant, and to re-review this proposal in 30 days. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a note, so we lose our captioning at 6:30. I thought we would be good on that, so I didn't put any time limits on anybody, but I might have misestimated that. So we have nine testifiers left, so I'm going to ask you to proceed as quickly as you're able. Next we have Aaron Robertson, who will be followed by Eric Engi.
Good evening, good evening Commissioners, I'm Aaron Rubenstein. I live at 33rd and Emerson in South Uptown. I live at 33rd and Emerson in South Uptown. Thanks for your attention to this matter. I sent a four-page letter to you this, early this afternoon via email, and I don't expect that you've had a chance to look at it, but I'll just try to hit most of the points quickly. I oppose the project as proposed. I agree with just about everything that Sam Rockwell just said to you. It's such an important project for Uptown. Uptown is in crisis. It needs momentum, and it needs a really great project to bring life and business and people back into Uptown, and this is not that project. This project would be detrimental to Uptown. It has the potential to be so much better, and so I support a 30-day layover as well. The commission and the city can't require Doran to work with Build Public and Michael Lander, but that's a great opportunity. Doran can choose to work on it on their own if they wish, but my letter goes into great detail about how I think the project is, as proposed, conflicts with the comprehensive plan, the zoning code, and the site plan requirements, to name a few. It's too big. The height is fine, but the scale and massing are much too large and not at all in keeping with the character and context of the Lake and Hennepin Node. As has been said, it contains no retail or active uses along Hennepin. A prime retail, the prime retail and commercial block in Uptown, what is proposed is not active at all. It has one single-leaf door on that whole building at 31st and Hennepin. In the letter, I mentioned that regarding the scale and massing, that this building occupies 43% of the block face of Hennepin from Lake to 31st. I actually miscalculated. That's the building site, but that doesn't take into account the 20-foot or so gap between the building. So the building site occupies 43% of the block face, and it has one single-leaf door. I go into detail about all of the elements of the staff report that I think are in error. I think the project would endanger the general welfare. It would significantly hinder, rather than help, the revitalization of Uptown. New housing is really important, but that alone will not help Uptown, as evidenced by all of the, you know, hundreds of new housing and numerous new housing projects along the Greenway, along Lake Street in recent years. As Mr. Rockwell noted, the project does not conform to the comprehensive plan. The plan, the plan policies that commercial retail uses are required at street level for all or of all development in this category to encourage pedestrian activity beyond typical daytime business hours. If city staff or the city attorney can verify that staff interpretation is that that doesn't apply to this project, that would be interesting. The staff report also notes that this ground floor does have active functions, and I would absolutely disagree with that. What else do I want to highlight? The appearance and compatibility of the building with individual buildings in the area. I would disagree that, as I said, I think the massing and scale are way out of character with the area. The portion of Seven Points Mall immediately to the north of this project site consists of four separate distinct buildings or facades. And across Hennepin, directly from this site, there are three buildings with seven entries to various businesses. So the proposed building is not conformed to the character of the immediate area and surrounding area, and its appearance, scale, massing are likewise incompatible. I agree about the Gerard meander. It has, we've always wanted to be a much stronger amenity to the community as part of this PUD, and it's been underwhelming, and I think this project will further degrade that amenity. It has a lot of, a lot greater potential to be more of an activated pedestrian area that is a benefit to Uptown, to this project, and to the community. And the six-foot-wide sidewalk at the south end, I think, is completely inadequate as an entry to this pedestrian area. In conclusion, I just want to say that we all, oh, it's important for me to make known that I've been a 20-year member of the South Uptown Neighborhood Association's Land Use and Transportation Committee, but tonight I'm speaking solely for myself, not representing the organization or its positions. We all want to see Uptown revitalized. We have different opinions about how to get there. I agree that this project is way too important, an opportunity to approve this project, which is just really not adequate. This is what happens when Minneapolis is too desperate for development and settles for inadequate project that seriously hurts the city in the long run. So I hope you will lay this project over so it can be revised. I think Uptown really needs something special to bring businesses and people. This is not it, and it's really a great opportunity, and I would hate for all of us to miss that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rubenstein. I'm going to ask staff to set the timer for, or you don't have a timer? Okay.
Because the public hearing was started without the timer, we need to give all members of the public the same opportunity to speak, so we cannot use the timer.
All right. I'm going to beg people, in order for us to get through everybody, I'm asking you to limit yourself to two minutes so that we can have time for discussion afterward. Next, we have Eric Engi, followed by Barb Davis.
I will only take an hour and a half. My name's Eric Engi. I'm a 40-year resident of the Wedge Neighborhood and 35-year business owner in the area. Past five, eight years, that multi-use building has been dead. And it is the heart of Uptown, part of it. And we finally have a company that's moving forward, has a pretty good design. I think it might not be perfect for everybody, which is hard to do, but we have momentum, and we're starting to get momentum in Uptown. And to delay this, and to delay this until we get it perfectly for everybody's situation is never going to happen. So I propose we move forward with this and keep Uptown moving forward and keep the momentum going that we have. I've seen more business, I've worked with small businesses every day, and I see more and more small businesses popping up. They are excited to see something going forward, and I think this would be a great way to start. Thank you.
Thank you. Barb Davis, and on deck will be Andrea Corbin.
Good afternoon. My name is Barb Davis. I'm a Lowry Hill resident at Irving and Douglas. I am here to speak in favor of the project. I think that the activity that can be a catalyst for more activity to make the balance of the neighborhood and bring back those, the people that can really support what's going on. And I would say that the project and the timeliness of the, of starting the project now can be, in fact, that catalyst to bring other things in. And I think the one thing that hasn't been discussed at all is that there is a vacant lot on Lake Street that is clearly part of the same project, that needs more consideration and can take more time to figure out how to fill the needs of that corner, because Uptown is needing to become something different than it is. And I think this project satisfies the rental opportunity that brings people in to support the businesses that we're trying to support and draw into the community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Andrea Corbin, and next will be Laura McGraw.
My name is Andrea Corbin. I am the president of the Uptown Association, and I also serve on the board of the Lynn Lake Business Association, and I have a small business in the Uptown area. I'm really excited about this project. We are struggling big time to get the rest of the mall filled right now. We have a lot of retail space in the mall that we're struggling to get filled, especially on that street where parking is limited. And so the types of businesses that come in into that corridor need to be considering the fact that we don't have, you know, parking that somebody can come in and out. So if they're picking up flowers or they're picking up food, it's going to be a difficult stretch to fill with commercial. But I think we have a huge corner that has a lot of opportunity for commercial spaces. And with this project, I've actually talked to Sam Aiken, who's the owner of the Seven Points Mall, and he said that there are three tenants that are kind of on hold, waiting to move into the mall, but they want to see the investment with this Doran project move forward in order to move into the mall. So there is a lot hinging on this project, and time is of the essence. As you know, with a lot of things in life, you know, you miss a good window of time and you miss an opportunity. So I just want to make sure that we're considering that, and like Eric Engi said, you know, we can have 50 different versions of this, and we're going to make 50 different people happy. So, thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Laura McGraw, and on deck will be Natasha Grealing.
I'm Laura McGraw. I'm the property manager at Seven Points, and I'm in favor of the project. Just like Andrea said, we have been talking with several tenants. As you know, over the last five years, we've struggled to see anybody coming in that wants to be in Uptown, right? We've got three that are very, very interested, but they're just waiting to see if anybody's going to be investing in Uptown. We've got a project here. We've got a great developer that's coming to the table. Let's get it done. Let's put life back into Uptown. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Natasha Grealing? Yep, go ahead. I lost track of the order. And then on deck will be Michael Tadros.
Hi. I'm Natasha Grealing. I am a property owner in the Uptown neighborhood, a few blocks from the property that we're talking about today. I'm also a business owner, and I've been involved in the community in various ways in the Uptown area for many years. So I am in support of this project. It's important to the community and the greater city, really. It could be a positive development for several reasons. I believe in the development, as many have said before, the development team behind this project, I believe they treat this as they do other projects in the community, because they are long-term investors in the community. So I believe that what they've brought forth is not going to make everyone happy, but will make, will make the area better. And also, just by bringing that multifamily building with great amenities, and it's well-thought-out in my opinion, it's an asset to the neighborhood that will bring quality housing and opportunity to not only the immediate area, but also other retail outside in the other parts of Uptown and greater Uptown. Lastly, the project has really been, you know, in the works in various capacities for over five years. And so I believe, as others have said, that the time's now to embrace that momentum and move this process forward, because East Jolay is putting renewed leasing activity, and not only Seven Points, but other areas, as been mentioned, in the neighboring zones, on hold. No one wants to be first, second, or first-last or not included. So please help Uptown and let us, let us move forward.
Thank you. Michael Tadros, and up next will be Nia Wilson.
Hi. My name's Michael Tadros. I didn't think I'd be coming down here really speaking about this, that's first off, but from what, from everything that I see, I don't understand why we're even having this meeting. We need action, and we need action now. I think the vision has already been kind of set by voting, coming up with the comprehensive plan, putting a commission, and putting advisors, and putting city planners in. They've already said that they support it. It's clear. They're joining the commercial. There's a lot of abandoned streets, abandoned buildings, all up and down Hennepin Avenue. Windows getting busted in every day, windows getting broken. It's, the commercial properties can be approved, and they're saying that the commercial is not a limitation right now. What's the worst that's going to happen if you let this plan go through? It's going to be, it's going to be, we're walking by some colors, and we're walking by color variances, or we're walking by, what are we walking by, more windows or less windows? You got to let this thing go, because the other side, the other side about it is not taking action. It's another brick through somebody's window. It's another business owner that fails. It's another place that closes. It's another shop that we've been seeing all down Hennepin Avenue that closes. I've been open for about 25 years now. My goal was always to be on Hennepin Avenue, and I finally got there, and you're just like, geez, this is what you work so hard for. So anyways, I would just say, take action regardless of what you guys decide right now. Let the plan go through, and I am supportive of it.
Thank you. Nia Wilson, and the last person we have on the list is Nico Woods. Do we have Nia Wilson? No, Nia? Okay. Nico Woods? Have Nico Woods? All right. Did anyone else want to speak to this? Come on up and introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Philip Qualley. I'm a resident at Lake and Emerson since 1982. Thank you for hearing the neighborhood today. I speak today as a private resident. I would ask that you please consider a delay of one cycle on this project. It is not ready for prime time. It is critical to the future of Uptown that you get this right. We have seen where the planning commission has, past commissions have allowed projects to go forward and licenses to go forward with large-scale establishments that have been detrimental to the homeowners and the businesses. The proof is where Uptown is today. So I respectfully, while we support Doran's efforts, we support the project, I believe it would be wise to allow parties to work together for another cycle and improve the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to testify? All right. Before I close the public hearing, I would like some clarity from a representative of the South Uptown Neighborhood. So I'm going to ask someone to speak on their behalf. Would that be you, Mr. Engel? Would you be the best person? Okay. So, your letter asks for a lot of different things. There's, you know, a potential for us to meet alternative compliance in relation to one thing. So I wanted to know more specificity about which thing would be most impactful for the South Uptown neighborhood. So would that, like, sounds like there was some possibility for Juliet balconies? Could you clarify, like, how many balconies you were seeking and where?
Well, for example, with the 31st and Gerard facades on the ground level, those are where the small windows are. Everywhere else in the building, there are decks with patio doors, so we're talking about those small windows. Just, and, you know, there was not a lot of time to provide feedback. We didn't get this until June 30th, so it's 22 days later. So we had hoped that this feedback could be submitted and kind of worked through before the planning commission, but that's not how these things work. So, you know, I don't know if we think the entire facade of Hennepin Avenue needs to be commercial, but I think we would think a little bit of it maybe could be a commercial space. Maybe additional doors along the Hennepin Avenue frontage, some additional landscaping designs for Gerard and perhaps along that wall for the south wall of the Seven Points. So I don't know if I'm asking for it all, but just small design tweaks is all why we put them in the letter.
If you could just pick one visual element design, which one would you prioritize?
I think Hennepin Avenue is probably the most important, it's the most visual and most prominent location.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, comments, motions? Anyone?
Yeah.
All right. Well, I'll start off where I'm at. So I agree with the testifiers who said that we should take action tonight. I believe that applicants deserve a yes or no, and I'm very reluctant to delay things unless the applicant themselves ask for that. So I would like to reach a decision tonight. I do feel that this, the application meets the intent of the comprehensive plan. So I don't want to make a finding against that. You know, I would love to have more commercial, but even in the broader context of the city, we have so many vacant properties that I actually think we should revisit some of the commercial requirements that we already have, and do not think it's a good idea, under these economic conditions, to, you know, exceed those requirements. But I do think that there is a nexus in relation to, you know, visible quality in relation to the wall that they're requesting alternative compliance for. I think it would be reasonable for us to do something in that regard. So I'm interested in what other Commissioners think on that. Oh, and I'm also receptive to the condition that Commissioner Wagner... Oh, and I'm also receptive to the condition that Commissioner Wagner alluded to during questioning. Commissioner Conley.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I kind of have a comment, and then just wondering if staff could clarify a piece that I heard. So, I would just, my comment really is that when you have buildings where that, we heard that the main level, the windows are small, they're up a little bit high. I heard murals. I am very supportive of murals. We've been activating Lake Street for quite some time now along East Lake Street. We need to continue to bring that west. I would recommend that you think about public art as infrastructure and utilize the many, many incredible artists that we have in this city to bring life to that wall. And then, the clarification that I would ask maybe staff to chime in on is this possible contradiction between the 2040 Plan and the Destination Mixed Use District, and how this plan, or this development, meets both of the requirements in the 2040 Plan and the Destination Mixed Use, so that we're very clear on that. Thank you.
Yes. So, planned unit developments, it is a requirement to plot them into as many lots as needed to satisfy the project. In this case, there are five underlying lots. One is, goes way back when for ownership purposes. That's part of the North Pond. So, there are multiple lots, but they can be part of a planned unit development. A planned unit development is a use listed on the use table. Gas stations, police stations, office buildings. Planned unit developments, it's a use, and so, we're looking at this as one development. And so, when looking at how much commercial is required in the development, we are looking at the mall and the housing project. And that is the project. And so, in this case, the amount of commercial that's required for the development is satisfied in the mall, not requiring more commercial in this building.
Which meets both, Mr. Chairman, which meets both the 2040 Plan and the Destination Mixed Use. Thank you.
That is correct. And the text amendment that just went through, the housekeeping text amendment that just went through this commission and our council, clarified this specific issue. Thank you.
Commissioner Wagner, did you?
I'll go, sure. I think everyone wants to get in. I can hop in. So, I also, when the time comes, I'm happy to make a motion regarding the electronic gate. I have some text prepared, so whenever we're ready for that, I can present that and get feedback and adjust it as needed. I'm happy to work with staff and the rest of the board to make sure we get that text right, if the rest of the board is open to that adjustment.
Can you read what you have?
Yeah, to clarify what I have here. So, conditional use permit item number A4. It currently says, shall explore the idea of adding an electronic control gate. And I would strike the text, shall explore the idea of adding, and change that to shall include. And then, at the end, after the last word of the sentence, I would change that to unless deemed not possible as determined by public safety.
The Department of Public Safety.
Department of Public Safety. And I'm open to changing that however is needed from a legal standpoint. So, if you have feedback on that, Kimberly, or staff.
Yes. So, the way it's worded right now is to allow flexibility for, you know, in the event that the fire department has an issue with it. So, I guess if you were going to change it, I would suggest that you change it instead of shall explore the idea, shall work with staff to add an electronic control gate. That's pretty standard language that we use for conditions of approval where other departments haven't been consulted and have a stake in the game.
Thank you for that feedback. I'm getting closer to making these motions correctly as I make them. I don't know if we want that right now. It seems like probably not, but I'm happy whenever the time comes for that.
I think unless someone makes an objection, we can just add to whatever motion.
Add that in now and vote on that?
No, I don't think we need to. Okay.
Okay, I can keep going with my comments then?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. So, proceeding to the rest of my comments. I'll try to keep it brief. We've been here a while. I appreciate everyone coming in. I appreciate the work the staff's done, the developers' done, all the members of the community and entities here. This one is tough for me. I think everyone in Minneapolis collectively in Uptown, I live near Uptown, would love to see more ground-floor commercial. I don't see that as a reason to deny this project. I echo what Chair Meyer said about revisiting commercial requirements. And then, just briefly to kind of speak to the development environment in Minneapolis in general, and I'll reference stats from the CPC Annual Report in 2024. A major project is any development resulting in 10 or more dwelling units. In 2024, we had 180 new dwelling units, down from 954 in 2020-23, down from 3,458 in 2022. So, we need more housing in this city. We need more housing in Uptown, and for that reason, I'll be supporting this project as is.
All right. Commissioner Chowdhury?
Yeah, thank you so much, Chair Meyer. I was hoping first to maybe get a, like, a little bit clarity from the applicant, if that's okay, just to understand, like, what was the thought process on not including ground-floor commercial? And then, just like, if you have some thoughts about, like, potential opportunities down the line for the public realm experience and just building connectivity within the neighborhood. I know we've been having this discussion. I think oftentimes, bodies like this, and even the council, gets asked to use blunt-force tools, like a 30-day extension or variance to kind of broker the conversation between parties, multiple parties in this case. And I hope that you've been listening and taking in a lot of the valid things, especially neighbors bringing up South Uptown. And I just wanted to see if you could comment on that and if your thinking has kind of been evolving as this discussion's gone on.
Staff is shaking their head at me.
Yes, Chair Meyer and Councilmember Chowdhury, the public hearing is closed, so I don't believe we can bring the applicant back up at this point.
Would you like me to reopen the public hearing?
I think it's an important thing to get on the record for such a big project.
So, I'm going to reopen the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak to Commissioner Chowdhury's question?
Thank you, Commissioner. Coming back here to speak to, I think you had two kind of questions. The first one is the public realm piece. I heard murals, I heard activation. Remind you, this is an entitlement package. It's a hard spot to be in every time we come through as a developer, because you have a project that people can't see the full vision, right? And I think there are components we can absolutely do, from the final landscape plans to potentially adding murals in key locations. We've done that with multiple projects, most recently in Minneapolis with a project called The Laker. So, there are those components where we would be open to if added a condition to that wall that I think is a little concerning. Collectively, is what I'm hearing from the commission tonight. That'd be something we'd be absolutely supportive and interested in. And then, I'd say, secondly, there is another comment that I heard in terms of just the ability to want to get involved. And we absolutely hear that, understand that, and apologize that some of the letters maybe didn't make it from the point of representation that we had access to, right, with the neighborhood group, and have continued to express interest and disdain plugged in. North Pond, as you know, as a property owner, has a lot more work to do beyond our project. They're trying to be a great partner in the next stage. And so, I think we respect, you know, the opinions and the changes and the design tweaks, but we have thought through this thing since 2021. We had a project in 2023 ready to go. We've listened to the market, financial considerations, all the complexities that we have to deal with as a developer, along with public input beyond April, right, from 2021 that we've heard in terms of retail being an issue. We started, there's a reference to a project that was shown with retail. We started with retail because we thought we had to, and it was a huge problem for the project. It was a huge problem we were hearing from the property management team in terms of having so much retail and then bringing in more, especially, again, more on a street frontage, Hennepin Avenue, that doesn't have convenient parking. So, you limit what tenant can go into that type of space that is at a ground floor. It'd be limited to 30 feet deep because of it being in a multifamily building. So, not only are you adding commercial at the time we thought we had to, to abide with code, you're adding a difficult commercial to fill. So, that was in the same location as the amenity space that we're now showing. We feel it's actually a much more improved project to not have that commercial. Our concern, and once that text amendment was adopted and staff clarified with us that, no, you don't have to, the reason we chose not to was purposeful, because we were concerned about creating more issues for the broader goal to bring in businesses and to increase traffic in generations. So, long-winded answer to your question, but we are open to conditions with regards to that south-facing wall of the Uptown Mall tonight, and in respect to the decisions being made tonight and all of the comments, and continue to be, hopefully, present in the community as invited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just conclude with my comments. I don't have any more questions. I appreciate you coming up here. I mean, hearing the conversation from community and all the stakeholders in the room, like, this is a tough conversation, right? There is a pressure, both in the future of Uptown, what this project is and what it will be, and then also a pressure of where Uptown is right now. Like, I hear 100% the concerns around what it means to slow things down in the face of a moment where we have a corridor that has so much potential and needs life and is, I would say, I wouldn't say dead. I would say is on the precipice of life, maybe on the, almost entering into spring, right? For me, I think it's really important that we take on this consideration around a condition for that south-facing wall, for that type of activation. I think it matters to have that. I think it's, as a Commissioner, I think it's difficult to think that if we did a delay for 30 days, that somehow all of the parties would lean in and things would change significantly because of a delay. One thing that comes to mind that I want to share to the developers in the area in seeing a lot of these apartment buildings go up throughout our city, and in the ways that it changes a corridor, oftentimes for the better, is things don't end as soon as the project is done and leasing has concluded for the first iteration of tenants, right? The way that you build this project and how it shows up in the neighborhood is going to determine how you're addressing concerns around safety and activation. Like, it is very helpful to have a sidewalk that's busy and places for people to go. It is going to be beneficial if something happens that impacts the safety and livability down the line, where your tenants that live within the building have a reason to come outside of the building and have opportunities to build community. And that's why, what I'm hearing from the folks that are pushing for that type of activation within public realm through commercial or just through those adjustments, so this building, this project, doesn't just act as a building where people live in, like, there is a community built around it. So, I would ask that there's still opportunity for you to engage with the neighbors that are here and take that input. Take that input around what is potential activation down the line, and not build a project where maybe in the future, maybe 10 years from now, you want to have some flexibility to maybe open up some of these doors for another potential on a corner. You might need it, right? Like, Minneapolis Uptown 2025 is not going to be the same as Uptown in 2035. And I just wanted to acknowledge that. I'm happy to put together that condition. It sounds like there is a willingness from the applicant. I would need a little bit of help potentially from the chair and staff to put that together. I've heard south-facing wall, but if there's more specificities that we need within it, would appreciate the support there.
Okay. So, yeah, for the south-facing wall, you know, we could require murals, vertical plantings, architectural detailing, or other public-facing elements. That's what the letter includes. We could be specific to one, or leave it open-ended or something?
Yes, and for the sake of time, I would suggest that we just borrow from the zoning ordinance, which has specific language about breaking up the wall. So, we don't have a blank uninterrupted wall that exceeds 25 feet. The language reads that we would not allow blank uninterrupted walls that do not include windows, entries, recesses, or projections or other architectural elements and exceeds 25 feet in length. So, you would deny alternative compliance and ask that that wall be broken up to not exceed 25 feet in length and allow the applicant to choose if they're going to add windows, entries, recesses, projections, or other architectural elements.
Point of clarification, is a projection the same thing as a mural?
No, a projection is like a literal depth change in the wall.
Okay.
So, a mural would still require alternative compliance. A mural is not considered something that breaks up a blank wall per the zoning code.
I'm struggling to see how that, incorporating that language would achieve a mural or vertical plantings and that type of thing within that wall.
So, that's the language that the zoning code uses to acknowledge that there is not a blank wall.
Okay.
So, the zoning code requires a recess, a projection, a window, a material change, or an architectural element every 25 feet.
I'll ask that.
So, if the commission is okay with a blank wall with a mural, then you could just say that also. But that's slightly more arbitrary than the zoning code language.
And another distinction on that, if we deny alternative compliance, then we don't really have a nexus to require anything else elsewhere. But if we grant alternative compliance with the condition of a mural, then we could also acquire balconies, if we wanted to do that, as part of improving the visible appearance.
I think I'll just set that on the table. I'm interested in hearing other Commissioners weigh in. I think this is like an interesting thing for us to consider. I appreciate Kimberly giving us that opportunity to even consider that zoning code change and deny alternative compliance. But if there's other thoughts on what we could do here, I think the thing that we're trying to get at is, what can we do with this wall? What can we do in terms of public realm improvements? So, I'm happy to hear from other Commissioners.
And Chair Meyer, the public hearing has been reopened, but it has not been closed.
Yes, and I wanted to ask if any other Commissioners want to ask questions of the applicant or anyone else before I close it again.
Could I come up and clarify that we are willing to, there's a condition, or willing to add a condition for a certain size of a mural? That is something we have experienced in the past with the project. So, if allowing the alternative compliance, and I'm not a legal expert, so you'll have to have support on backing this, but I would suggest we would be willing to look at a size requirement versus just a blanket mural. For example, the project in Minneapolis we recently opened in 2023 had three murals along the Second Street that were 20 by 22 feet. That wasn't a requirement per se in the same setting, but that is something we could consider if allowed through conditions. That might help you, just again, guide you to something where we know makes sense. The scale of that height is 32 feet of the building, and it is about 226 feet long, to give you respective scale.
So, are you proposing a certain size tonight for the condition?
We would absolutely propose, I would say, scale-wise, knowing our other project, we, I would either be open to about a 20 by 20-foot mural. It allows flexibility for, again, when you go through the process of procuring that with muralists, more space for them to, call it, user design creativity. Three seems like a, three to four seems like a fair number if you think about the scale and how they would space them apart. And the experience that you would see typically when you do four, they somehow tie together. So, I would say we'd be open to about a 20 by 20-foot mural from a size perspective, that's scalable with a 32-foot-high wall, and then a number that you could put on that as well in terms of the amount of murals.
So, sorry, four 20 by 20, or one, or a total of 20 by 20?
I'd say we'd be open anywhere from one to four.
Okay. And then, would you be receptive to adding balconies on all the ground-level units?
Commissioner Meyer, I would say we'd be extremely concerned with balconies. Juliet balconies, maybe, but...
When I say balconies, that's, my intent was for it to be broad enough to include Juliet balconies.
Okay. Commissioner Meyer, I would say if it's a stake of getting this project to a spot that everybody feels is comfortable getting to the finish line tonight, again, for sake of, we have all the, all the more, call it, goal... of, we have all the, all the more, call it, goal as a local developer, Anne Barant, her owner, is also in the audience tonight, and she grew up in this neighborhood, we aren't going anywhere. So we really want to stay present in terms of not tweaking final design at this point on items that we don't feel add value or could also detract value. I'd say Juliette balconies just could detract value to this building, but if it is something that is the sticking point, we would be open to it. And I'd say moving forward, my goal as the development lead and as us as a team is to attend these meetings with the neighborhood groups to understand maybe items that we can achieve to make everybody, because there isn't a collective voice, we're getting a lot of different, you know, opinions and what is desirable, but what I want to hear from continued conversations, if we can get to a spot of approval tonight, is what is the bigger picture that the community wants to see in terms of activation? What are activities once we're open to help get residents into the mall once there's commercial? Those are the things when I say I hope we continue to be present, as the neighborhood groups allow us, is to attend those meetings, to have those conversations. So to answer your question about Juliette balconies, it's a hard one for us, we do see them as a concern, but if it's something that's extremely important to the planning commission as a whole, absolutely.
Okay. Anyone else before I close the public hearing for the final time?
I had a few thoughts, if I may.
Do I have any questions for them?
Oh, no, no questions, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing.
All right, and Chair Meyer and the rest of the commission, I just have to underline that we have to finish by 6:30 because we do not have captioning past that point. Thank you.
Goodness.
I'm pretty caffeinated, I can talk fast.
Okay. Commissioner Shepherd?
I'm a little sensitive to the idea that the planning commission would legislate design, and I say that as an architect, that our findings of fact are confined to Minneapolis 2040 Plan and the comprehensive plan. So specific design elements, I resist. The idea about the discussion about the blank wall, that's a private courtyard essentially, as you have designed it. So that is probably the least important of the things which the neighborhood is bringing up in terms of the public realm. The important things are the Hennepin County streetscape, and you've already discussed how you've made that amenity space retail-ready with your plate height, which I assume goes the entire first-floor plate, just out of curiosity, and the Gerard meander. So if there's an opportunity to work with these groups, which have expressed some interest in working with you, over the next 30 days, that'd be great. That's not me making a motion for a continuance, unless you find that necessary, because I was interested in your thoughts on continued evolution over the next 30 days of those public realm facing. But I hesitate to make that a requirement.
Okay.
And I'll zip it now. Thank you.
All right. Can I get a quick reaction from people? Does anyone else care one way or the other about balconies? I don't know.
Chair Meyer, if I may just note, so we're not further complicating things, if the intent of Juliette balconies was to allow for sliding glass doors on the first-floor units, sliding glass doors are not counted towards the minimum window requirement, and then staff would need to reanalyze all of that, so I think that would complicate things.
Okay. Given that complication, what I'm going to propose is to adopt staff findings with the revision of Commissioner Wagner's condition as modified by staff and a requirement, if Commissioner Chowdhury approves, of four 20 by 20 murals?
I will move that, I think that's something that the applicant is amenable, and when the applicant's amenable, I think that's a good opportunity to incorporate. So I can move that.
Okay. So just to review, Kimberly, can you read what you said for Tom's Commissioner Wagner's condition?
So the motion would be to approve item A by modifying condition number four, to say that the applicant and the owners of the Seven Points Shopping Center shall work with staff to add an electronic control gate at the north end of Vacated Gerard. And under C, site plan review, we would be adding a condition number eight, that the applicant shall add four 20-foot by 20-foot murals on the south elevation of the existing shopping center in order to break up blank walls. We can leave out that.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion? All right. Commissioner Thompson?
I've been waiting to speak for a while. I will add this, it wasn't part of my thing. I think it's really, I find it profoundly challenging that we're sitting up here glossing over staff stuff to get murals, when like, this project, well, I just ran some numbers because that's what I do, it would add potentially, with the revitalization of Seven Points and this development, could bring in $1.5 million in a tax base back year over year, which I think needs to be profoundly considered when we recognize the challenges that our city faces. I'm grateful that people seem to be okay not having commercial developments. I've been wanting to say that for a while, whatever with the murals, I think it's a little too much, but I support this being passed today. Thanks.
All right. Any further discussion? We've got one minute left. City non-clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Baxley is absent. Chowdhury?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Jones is absent. Shepherd?
Aye.
Shefty is absent. Thompson?
Aye.
Wagner?
Aye.
Meyer?
Aye.
We have seven ayes and zero nays.
That is adopted, that concludes our business for the evening. Our next meeting is, when is our next meeting?
I believe it's August 4th.
Okay, August 4th, and we have no, no, yep, no committee of the whole this week? Any updates from staff or commissioners?
Nope.
All right, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.